Are you looking at your watch? Danny, how are you doing?
Yes.
I know that move. Doubt it.
Microphones. Yep. Okay. It's already recording. So, calling to order the city council meeting for April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. It is five thirty P M. We are honored to have Danny Stewart provide our opening ceremony, which is the prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Father in heaven, we're grateful for this beautiful day, for the opportunity we have to be here to meet and address these items of business here in Parowan. Grateful for the leaders of this community, for their time and their efforts in behalf of all of the citizens here. Pray that thy Spirit will be here in this meeting to, to help guide the, uh, business which will be conducted this evening. Grateful for this wonderful community, for the freedoms that we enjoy. Pray that thou please bless us. Thankful that we have received some rain this spring. We pray that thou would continue to send, uh, moisture to this community, to this valley throughout this summer, that may receive those things that we need. Express our gratitude and pray for thy Spirit and say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, are there any conflicts or personal interests on any of the agenda items? Let me also just include, so we found a setting on our minutes taker that made our minutes more extensive, and we're gonna change to that setting. So Callie asked that we give her another council meeting to present the minutes to us so that it is sure to be more inclusive because there was, there were some things missing and some inaccuracies this time. So with that change to the agenda, are there any conflicts or personal interest in any of these items?
No mayor.
No mayor.
No mayor. All right. And now we have public comment time. Might, might be right on cue if you'd like to, oh, maybe not. If you'd like to come up and, uh, make a public comment, you have two minutes to do so. Just state your name. You don't need to state your address, and you can share your thoughts and concerns with the council.
I timed my speech to less than three minutes, Mayor.
Okay.
So, my name is Janelle Zajak, and I'm a citizen. I'm here to express my strong support for the approval of the requested ordinance variance for Legacy B Estates, which seeks to allow the development of manufactured homes on leased home sites. Legacy B represents an opportunity to expand affordable, high-quality housing options in our community. Manufactured homes have evolved significantly in recent years, offering energy-efficient, attractive, and durable housing at a fraction of the cost of traditional site-built homes. Their leased lot model makes homeownership more accessible to entry-level individuals and young families who might otherwise be priced out of the market. By the way, in two thousand and twenty-four, approximately fifty-seven percent of new manufactured homes were placed in land-leased communities, with site lease fees averaging around five hundred and thirty-five dollars per month, with three point nine percent average annual increases. This idea is new, really only to Parowan. My first home was a manufactured home in a park. We call it a trailer park. Um, the equity that I earned on the sale of that manufactured home allowed me to purchase a site-built home. As a single woman in my twenties, it was the beginning of my homeownership dream. This community won't be for everyone. Those who can afford to purchase a lot and new construction for a home will do so. And those who can afford upwards of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to purchase a small home in Parowan might choose to do so. By the way, I just saw one hit the market today in Parowan, three bedrooms, three baths, over four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, but, for those who choose an affordable manufactured home on a leased lot in a community, this is an excellent solution for them. Please don't limit the dreams of others by rejecting an idea because you don't agree with the business model. I've watched Legacy B Estates reach out to Parowan City to design a solution that will be favorable to the council and serve the community. Please don't let your past trailer park biases sway your vote and deny our community another housing option. I urge you to grant the variance they request and provide this type of community that offers affordable and forward-thinking solutions, fostering inclusive and livable communities on the outskirts of our little town. Thank you for your consideration and for your, uh, commitment to our city.
Thank you, Janelle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think we can move on now from public comment. Um, we'll go into our consent agenda. These are administrative items that are usually approved by one motion. We have item five, which is the approval of the city council meeting minutes, which we already discussed. We're gonna put those on hold until the next meeting. And then we have the approval of the warrant register for April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve consent item number six.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries. Now moving into our action agenda, these are items that will be voted on this evening. Um, the first one is item number seven. It's the local consent for the temporary beer permit for a single event for the Old Spanish Trail Rodeo on June thirteenth and fourteenth. Is there any information we need to know about that, Dan, or is that just a straightforward application for a two-day event?
Um, I actually don't have any in- information on that. I believe Callie does. It looks like she stepped out for just a second.
I mean, it was in our packet as far as the application. I feel like I'm okay with...
We did it last year, and this is just being common.
It's pretty, it's pretty, uh, standard.
It's pretty simple and standard.
We, we do it for the fair and things, so.
All right.
I'll, I'll move to approve the temporary beer permit for the single event, Old Spanish Trail Rodeo, June thirteenth and fourteenth.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. We're now looking at item eight, which is the property trade, A dash zero 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 two dash zero zero two four dash zero 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 for Dwight Hargit. And it is for parcel A dash zero three nine five dash zero 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 dash zero 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 zero.
And do we, do we have Dwight here today? I don't know if we do. I can, um, explain this. Um, let me, I'm gonna go ahead and switch over to my screen here.
And just so everyone knows, occasionally we take, um, a little bit of flack and heat about closed-session meetings, and people are like, oh, the council goes in closed session, and that means something happens that's a secret. It really isn't. Um, there are certain things you can go into a closed meeting about, and we're having a training on that today. So, um, basically, when you talk about real estate, parcel trades, purchase negotiations, things like that, if there's ever something that needs to be voted on, it comes out to a public meeting, and we do that in the public. So that, this is one of those items.
Okay, um, we, we did recently have a closed meeting. Um, we had a, uh, a property owner. For, for those that, that are not aware, um, UDOT has a, um, a plan. Um, and as soon as funding is allocated, um, Highway twenty, two seventy-one, which is the Paragona Highway, will be, um, realigned. As it comes in from Paragona, um, it comes into this, um, odd intersection, which is on Main Street, which is another UDOT road. And it is, it comes in at an odd angle, not tying into a normal intersection. So, for quite some time, the plan has been to, to reroute two seventy-one so that it ties into seven hundred north in Main Street, right by the city sign on the north part of town. For that purpose, the city has been, um, acquiring property and, um, trading and acquiring property to, to provide enough right-of-way to realign that road. Um, and we just have so many other projects which have taken priority. We haven't pushed for this, nor has UDOT had the funding to do this yet. Um, in that, in, in light of that, we had a, um, a, a resident, I don't know if he's a resident, I think so, he's a business owner, um, come in with, um, wanting to get a building permit to build on a piece of property which will end up being, um, dramatically impacted as this road gets abandoned, as property gets, um, rerouted. Eventually, six hundred north will go through horizontally, and one hundred east will get put in. And so we'll basically restore the grid, or build the grid on the north end of town. And that's been the city's intent and plan for some time. Um, so, he came in wondering about developing this property, and, and after he found out about the city's future plans as we do that, um, not to mention there is not utilities in Highway two seventy-one now, and it's probably not the best investment on his behalf, nor does the city wanna put utilities in a road that's gonna be, um, realigned and abandoned. Um, at that point, um, discussions were started about potentially trading for a similar property that the city owns here on three hundred east, which would allow him to, um, do what he wants to do with his property. Since he didn't have a building permit, I don't feel like that's public knowledge. It is an approved use. Um, and would, which would allow him to move forward with his business now. And the city would retain this property here, and at which point, when all of this gets realigned, there's gonna be trading, um, of, with all of the properties around here to get them better properties, get the city property, get the roads and right-aways established. And, um, we'll see at that point what the city owns and if there's any, um, use of that property or whether we'll put it on our disposal list. But, that, that is something that the city council has considered and, and, um, at least wanted to bring it to this point so that we could discuss it and vote on it. Um, there is a discrepancy in the size of the parcels. Right now, the parcel that the property owner has willing to trade is point four nine acres, and the property that the city has is point six six acres. Um, having said that, as this property, as the road gets, um, abandoned, there will be additional property added. We don't know exactly what that is. The city will end up with that, the state will end up with it, and we'll give it to the property owners on either side. We don't know exactly how that process will look. Um, and not really sure how to address that, whether we do an, an acre, just an acre-for-acre trade or whether we do a straight-across trade, knowing that there will be more acreage coming to the city in that, in that process. So that's what we have for the council to consider. Um, if we're just disposing of a property, we put it up for auction, but something like this where we're doing a trade, it's not really something that we put up to auction. If, if we do it in a public meeting and explain the benefit to the public, then that does satisfy the ordinance that the city has, so. That's the setup.
Dan, who owns that little triangle piece on one hundred east and Highway two seventy-one?
This triangle piece?
No, no, that little teeny one.
This one?
Hitty corner from the, that.
Same property owner who owns this right here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, all of this is gonna have to kind of get realigned into usable parcels. Make sure the accesses are still made available to business owners and property owners and, and so forth.
Could the motion be that it could be of equal size?
Yeah. Yep. We, we just said that we would entertain it and discuss it. Um, one of the challenges with this lot right now, you see this, this little skinny piece in front of these two parcels? That's actually a piece that's owned by the city. I don't know how the history evolved to have us own that little piece. Um, but it is larger than we need for the right-of-way. It makes it approximately a hundred and twenty-foot right-of-way with that piece, which we don't need. And technically, it would block access to this property. Um, I, I would recommend that we do, um, that we require as a condition of this trade a, um, a new survey to be done so that we can, we can fix these, these boundaries so that it is, so that it is a parcel that is...
Usable?
Usable. It's right up to the street. We don't have to come back and deal with this little skinny piece later. But, I mean, we could do the trade now and deal with that later. I'd, I'd just like to clean it up all at once, though. But if, if we do that, it, it's approximately, and you, you can't go off of this exactly, the online county parcel viewer. But, from my estimation, if we were to square that off and include that little piece, it's, it's almost three-quarters of an acre compared to the half-acre or point four nine that his property is. So, if we were to do some sort of an equal piece, it would just be a, we'd probably wanna bring, sorry. We'd probably wanna bring this property boundary here. The city owns both sides of this. We own, we own all of this property right here. So, I would say maybe we'd scoot this property boundary down a little bit if we wanted to do an acre, an acre-for-acre straight-across trade. It'd probably be something like, this would be, something like that would be a similar acreage. And, and we can make some sort of a, an estimate on acreage for what this will be once this road is, is abandoned. Um, I've tried to estimate what that would be, but by the time, they're gonna have to give up six hundred north 'cause that's on our transportation master plan at some point. At least build their property back away from that. Um, if you approximate adding in half of the right-of-way here and then remove the six hundred north piece, it comes to somewhere around point five five to point six acres. We could, we could offer up in a, 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 a trade of the same acreage over here. I think that would be pretty fair. It is zoned differently. This small acreage of his is zoned commercial, and this acreage is zoned industrial manufacturing. It, the business that he wants to, um, do is actually permitted in our table of uses in I N M. So, it would be pretty much, other than resur surveying it, it would be a, uh, like a turnkey ready-to-build lot, which is one advantage to him. A huge advantage, by the way.
Who would have to pay for the survey since we're wanting to trade? Is that gonna fall to us?
Well, I've, um, suggested that we would need to have him, we don't need to do this trade. This is not something that, I mean, we're fine owning that piece of property. And, and if he wanted to come in for a building permit tomorrow, he would have to show the engineering to put all of the utilities in down to here. That's quite expensive. Um, in my, in my, um, letter to him, I said, we would need him to cover the closing costs. And a title report, he produced a title report that had just been generated on the property recently. And I said that would probably be sufficient, um, but he would need to cover the closing costs. And so, surveying would probably wanna have him include that as well, otherwise, and we don't have anything budgeted for this. The city doesn't gain, the city's not harmed by this trade, but it doesn't necessarily gain anything other than this is gonna give us a little bit more wiggle room as we start realigning these parcels down here. Um, and we don't, like I said, we don't wanna have the utilities put in in a road that we're gonna abandon. Then you just have to have utility easements.
Yeah, this is a good trade for him, and it's basically, I think, Parowan City doing a good deed 'cause this helps him. Otherwise, he's gonna get landlocked eventually.
Yeah. He'll end up in the middle of a block.
So like, I would, I would consider the point six.
Point six? We just do a trade for point six acres?
Point six acres for what he could potentially become down there. I would do that. Where's the point six come from?
Would it just start on this north boundary and come south, so it hits point six?
But he's got how much?
He has point four nine plus whatever gets abandoned.
So he'll be around by five to point six. But, that, we don't know when that's gonna happen.
Nope. We would only own point four nine until that happens.
Right. And then, anything can happen in that process, too.
Anything could happen, but the city will be the driving force of doing that. We'll be in the driver's seat.
Yeah. I mean, the, uh, you know, the standard or whatever is to put both properties back to their, the original state.
Right. And I don't know if that's something that has to happen. I don't know if the city could retain, 'cause we own all the right-aways in the city. I don't know whether we have to abandon it and, and give the property either side half and half. We may want to retain all of it and then trade it all around, and the city ends up owning a quarter of the block. We, we, we do need, um, some, some property for different projects, so I don't know exactly how that works. Would we have to do the UDOT process?
My understanding, my understanding, they go back together.
Right. And, and, and it, I guess it depends on what you're doing.
When there's a road or an easement abandoned, they go back together.
Yeah, if we're abandoning it, yeah.
Yeah. If UDOT does.
Right.
Why wouldn't we stick with the point four nine, just because that's value to value today?
We could do that.
Yeah. Just for that information, that little sliver, I think, was the deal with the flood issue years ago, that flood channel.
Yeah, there did used to be a flood drainage down three hundred east.
Yeah.
Possible. That may be why we own this whole weird little section down here, too.
The whole thing was just designated as the flood channel. Three hundred east.
A little before. No.
Not a city council meeting without bringing up Harley P. Pratt.
Every time.
Thoughts or discussion? Are we still thinking about it?
I think we ought to do a, uh, square foot for square foot for what he owns right now because that's what he owns. And then, who, the other, we were speculating on what may happen and when. We may all be up in the cemetery by then.
Any other thoughts the council wants to share? Is anyone ready to make a motion? Go for it.
Well, I'll move that we make the exchange. Do we need to list the parcel numbers? But, I want to list it, a, square foot for square foot for what he owns now, what he presently owns for an exact same square footage of what he, for what the city owns in the exchange.
And would you in your motion say, um, who would cover the cost of the, uh, the new survey and creation of new legals?
Are we the one that's making him sell that property?
No, it's, it's not, it's, this, this doesn't hurt the city, it doesn't benefit the city. What's that?
For future.
Because of the road, is it?
No, he wants to move forward right now with a building permit on his part, property, which is problematic. Doing this trade would help him to move forward quicker, and we really don't want that to be developed until that all gets realigned and everything anyway, so. If nothing happened tomorrow and nothing happened at all, we're still fine, but this does allow him to move forward rather quickly, and it does solve some of his, um...
I would do that as far as the survey based on the need to straighten up that sliver.
So you would say who does what? We split it? Is that what you're saying?
No, we, no.
We cover it so that we can straighten up that little sliver to get that surveyed so that we, uh, we delete that.
So your, your emotion would be that we would cover the survey cost? I, I, I had suggested in my letter that he would cover the other closing costs. Is that, you still good with that?
Yeah.
So that's your motion?
And, well, and in that, we were able to straighten that little, in the survey, get that little sliver.
We could share the survey.
Straight.
Does it, it benefits both of us.
Yeah.
So we would do point four nine acres, and it would start in this, it would, it would, it would basically start from the north boundary of that parcel, come all the way out through this sliver. Does that make sense?
Right, right.
And it would head south to some point that it's point four nine acres.
Right. Now...
Oh, that was pretty good.
Well, it's pretty close.
Out of information, that sliver's still there in front of English property?
I believe so. Now, you can't perfectly go off of the county's parcel indicator, but it does have thr, there's three distinct parcel numbers, so I believe that would, we would just resolve that at that same time. We would, what we would do is we would combine this weird little piece, the rest of this lot, with this long piece that we have.
Okay, but on the, on the property to the north?
English?
Above it?
Yeah.
English, yeah, okay. Would they get that property, that, that little sliver?
No, this wouldn't affect them at this point.
So you wouldn't clear that up?
Yeah, we would have to involve them in doing that. Um, we probably would wanna do either a, either a sale to them, or I guess we could, we could deed that to them. Um, it's not a usable, functional property. They, they don't have a, um, they need, still need to get a building permit, um, at some point. Part of the trade, when we traded that with them, is that we g, we, um, gave them a temporary power hookup and things like that. But, um, when they, when it comes time for them to develop it, it'd probably get to be good to clean it up at some point. Also, it's not that big of a deal. If it was a private property owner, they could technically legally block them from crossing. City isn't gonna do that, so. We could clean it up, it's just that we would have to rewrite the legal for their property and deed it to them.
Right. That's probably needs to be done in this particular time.
That's me if you're doing the bottom one. You need to do that one, too, eventually.
Yeah. And I'd wanna double-check and make sure that's drawn correctly as part of this whole thing, which the survey will cover that.
Okay.
You didn't mention the parcels, but I, but the parcels are in the, on the agenda item, so.
Okay. Move to, uh, trade the parcel A dash zero 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 two dash zero zero two four dash zero 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 for Dwight Harg, is it Hargit?
Hargit.
Hargit, parcel A dash zero three nine five dash zero 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 dash zero 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 zero. Uh, and that we will take care of the survey cost and want to, well, we wanna exchange square foot for square foot, and we'll cover the, uh, survey cost, and we will straighten up that little sliver in the front while we take care of this exchange.
Do we need to put in about the closing costs?
Oh, and that they'll take care of it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, one more thing add to your motion. That's, um, assuming we have clean title on the deed. He's gonna have to transfer a lien with a private lender. We're not gonna close without that, but...
So do you want, uh, title insurance or just clean title? I mean, that, he needs to provide clean title to that deed with the...
Yep, yep. Exactly.
Title insurance.
And he, and he knows that.
So.
And that's part of the closing costs.
And then he'll pay those closing costs.
Yep. That's quite the motion, Callie.
I'll second, I'll second your motion. And I'm seconding you, so we can move on.
Don't ask me to repeat it, please.
Can you repeat that? So, we had a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. All right, thank you. Moving now to item number nine, this is the update on the city code for RV park links, length of stay. It's ordinance two thousand and twenty-five dash one zero.
I'm gonna keep it on mine, Kelly. I'm gonna keep it on mine, Kelly. I'll pull up that ordinance too.
Hello there.
Hello, how are we doing today?
Good. See you.
Okay, so we've, we've talked about this. This is kind of planning commission with a recommendation coming forth to city council, um, with, um, the idea, now this is not specific to these guys, the ordinance isn't. The specific, the ordinance would amend city land use code in, um, regarding the length of stay in RV parks. Uh, fifteen, title fifteen, chapter fifty six. Um, and would amend the definition, um, and would enact a, a, a separate chapter that's related to the length of stay. And specifically what it would do would allow for, um, the city to conditionally give an RV park, um, a, a portion of the park and it was identified as not to exceed thirty percent of the total area of the park, um, with a long-term stay of up to nine months in that parti- in that percentage of the park. Um, and that's nine months, nine consecutive months in any twelve month period. And the rest of the park will stay at the, at the existing, um, restriction of twenty nine day maximum stay. Um, and it, it's written that this can be granted, but it has to be granted with a conditional use permit. And, um, we, we all know that we've been talking to one particular RV park owner and that's why we're talking about that. We will, at next, um, if this passes, talk about the conditional use permit for them to, to, to do this, assuming it passes and it's now legal to do so. But the first item is to actually enact the ordinance, which would have changed the code to allow it. The second thing on the agenda would be to actually put a conditional use permit, um, for that specific thing for them. And, um, planning commission did make a recommendation to allow this. And they also made a recommendation that should we pass this, to give these guys said conditional use permit. And the only real items that have been discussed in detail of what could be required in that conditional use permit, lot of the discussion comes around fencing, so that's where we're at.
Can you scroll down to where you've put in, like, the thirty percent? Okay, so we're talking about thirty percent, like you guys came, wanted thirty percent of what's developed now. What happens when you're, are, then are we talking about thirty percent of the entire park once it's fully built out as well?
That's the way it's written.
Yeah, that, well, I guess that would be, yeah, I guess that's the way that the, the, it looks to me is that it would be thirty percent of the whole park. So, but in doing so, when we build out, you know, if we build, right now we have sixty eight spots.
Mm-hmm.
If we extend that, you know, I don't know what the dollar figure will be to do that, but yeah, we'd probably have to continue with the thirty percent so during the winter we can pay, pay for that bill.
Okay, so, and then doing this, Dan?
Yeah.
Like, the only issue I'm really having is that we're putting it in ordinance for one RV park that's here now. But tell me about, like, if somebody else wants to come in and put another RV park in. This is in our ordinance, so technically they would be able to have the same...
By conditional use permit.
But, okay.
That's the beauty of doing it the way that was done, is that we, when we talked about doing it, there was of, of course, the full range to just, just allowing it any, in any park, and allowing it to a certain percentage of any park, and allowing it, but they have to get a conditional use permit. And that was what the planning commission wanted to do. So if somebody comes up and builds a par- a park on the, on the north end of town, they're, they're subject to only, they're limited to only twenty nine days unless they wanna go, come in and go through this process to get a conditional use permit.
Okay.
Which would limit them to a maximum of thirty percent and so forth.
Could it be phrased in a way that the conditional use could be agreed on what the terms are after the fact?
Um...
And a case by case basis rather than doing just a full slapdown?
What, I don't know what you mean by full slapdown. You mean, you mean the ninety...
Uh, like, is it, is it possible to, to phrase it saying, obviously the first part, section B, but then saying that, you know, with the long term say conditional use and leave that up to a determination?
It could be. Um, there was a lot of discussion with both the planning commission and the city council. That was kind of the upper limit of what everybody felt comfortable with, was a thirty percent of the park in nine months. It could say, it could be entirely open ended and, and decided at each time, but the way it was, the, the way I was instructed to write the ordinance for planning commission and city council was this way.
I've, I've got a follow-up question on that. Well, did you?
Yeah, I was just gonna say maybe another idea, Dan, is total capacity. So let's say a park has two hundred, you know, total units. You could maybe base it off of that total capacity.
A percentage of the total rentable units?
Somebody comes in, you know, they're approved for five hundred sites or whatever. You know what I'm saying? So the bigger the park, you could, you could tie it...
What, what's the difference between thirty percent of the area and thirty percent of the capacity?
Just the site, you know, the individual sites.
Yeah, I mean, we could make that modification. We could make any of these modifications right now. This is just, this was the, this was consistent with the recommendation and then the discussion with council, so.
So you're saying change the word area to sites?
Is that what you're recommending?
That's just an idea of how to kind of, you can pin it to a capacity. Oh, I see the sites, yeah. Thirty percent.
I feel like it's, if we have the word sites or areas, it's the same thing personally.
To me, it's the same.
But it does make it a little bit clearer in, as to exactly how many sites they can have. Area, now you're doing square footage calculation and that's kinda weird.
That is weird.
Because you, you, you're gonna have some potential open space and...
Well, if you wanna look at it, we technically, we have over thirty acres there.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
So are we, are we basing this on the to- total thirty acres?
Then it's ten acre, then you say ten acres and then that happens to be where they are. Making it a sites makes it a little bit more clear. I, I totally agree.
Yeah. And maybe just from my understanding...
Are you sure you're speaking into the microphone? Cause I just got a text that people can't hear.
Okay.
Thanks.
Maybe just from my understanding, is there a reason we wanna limit it at all? I mean, do you put a limit on any other business like this?
Yes, we don't want long-term people staying there for years and years. Yeah, we wanna limit.
Okay.
Well, I do. I can't speak for, I'm one person of five, but I don't want, there's gotta be a limit.
I guess just from my understanding, I guess I don't understand or feel like any other business gets their hands tied in a way like this. And, and maybe you could help me understand. And I'm not trying to be argumentative, I just wanna understand a little.
Well, we could revert it back to the two weeks like it was before.
I'm not trying to be arg-
I know, and neither am I. I'm just being a smart alec.
I just am, I want an understanding.
It's just this particular type of business.
Yeah, I think this kinda coincides with the, the, the type of business. Cause if you compare this to anything else, you, you know, you don't have somebody that's staying in a business, residing, you know, on any term. And so I, I think it kinda, it kinda is conducive with the, you know, the uniqueness of this type of business. And, uh, you know, I thought we were being reasonable and trying to adjust this at this time for that amount, nine months, you know, and a thirty percent, trying to be reasonable. Cause, you know, originally there was a lot of pushback to leave it at the twenty nine days because of the TRT and different things. And we all were kinda getting our feet wet, so to speak. And so, I, I just think this is something we're trying to make a, you know, being a reasonable on both ends, making some concessions and some consideration on both sides to see how this plays out. Hopefully it's gonna be, you know, help you be profitable, cause that's what we want. We don't wanna stifle you in any way, but we also have to look after the integrity of the community. So I hope you understand.
All right, so we've made the clarification from area to rentable sites. Is there anything else the council wants to discuss on this item?
Mayor, could I ask, did, what did we decide on the fence?
Well, I think that we were gonna get into that when we discussed their conditional use permit.
Okay.
It's the next line.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
This would just allow for the possibility to...
All right, is there a council member ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to update city code for RV park length of stay, ordinance twenty twenty five dash ten.
I'll second it.
Okay, this is an ordinance, so we will vote by roll call, starting with council member Topham. Can you start on the other end? Will you start on the other end? Okay, we'll start with council member Burton.
Uh, David Burton, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
John Dean, aye.
Dave Harris, aye.
Or else shall Topham know? All right, so four to one motion, so the motion carries. All right, moving now to item number ten. This is the conditional use permit for the Painted Hills RV park.
So the applicant is here looking for a conditional use permit. You wanna grant it and any conditions?
What are we doing with the fence?
Yes.
That's what we're after.
So, um, I, I don't know if everybody saw the emails that I sent out. Um, um, Scott sent me, um, a, the approved plans when the city permitted this. And, um, it had, it, it had a fair amount of, um, detail. It was a large file. That's why I didn't email the entire file. It was like twenty five megabytes. But I did, um, send the council the page of the plans, which showed the whole site, showed, um, in fact, let me bring that up, cause I think it's probably illustrative of what the plan was. And, um, had some good information, um, including the, uh, the actual fence was contemplated and, and the language isn't as, as great as we would love it to be, but it did seem to mirror the RV park, um, screening requirement that was in code at the time. And we, we, we did modify the RV park code and it is similar to what we have now in our RV park code. So it was anticipated that a fence would be put around. Um, I did find, um, today, there's another, there, there's, here, let me just, let me just pull it up. I apologize. My computer's scanning for viruses.
It's gonna restart.
There we go. Okay, so this is one of many pages from their plans that were stamped and approved. This was the final set of plans from the engineer. And, um, it contemplated the fence. In fact, I'll zoom in on it. Owners plan to provide screening through a combination of permanent solid fences and hedges. Exact location per owner. Obviously, it doesn't describe what type of fence. Um, it calls it a combination of permanent solid and fences and hedges. Um, the other reference on the plans to fencing, um, is actually found, whoa, I zoomed way out, sorry, my bad.
My eyes aren't that good.
Is actually found here where it, it shows, um, it refers to the fence. For the life of me, I don't know what these blocks are on here. Generally, this X with lines in between it designates fencing. Um, and that usually designates where an existing fence is on plans like this. An existing fence does not always mean the property line. Um, my guess is this dark black line is the property line and the, this is where the existing fence is. That's typically how, um, the engineers show this, and I know that's the way this engineer. Um, it also says permanent screening fence per city ordinance completed with phase one. Um, so, we, we had quite a conversation as to what would be required i- in the, in the transition between commercial and a residential use. A different part of our code said block wall, so we talked a lot about that. Um, it would seem that we, that they proposed to follow the code that was there and we approved this other definition, not this other definition, but what they had said there. Um, that they would follow the city code in putting in a combination of solid and fences and hedges. So that, I'm sorry, but that's all I have for you. I don't know whether, um, whether a chain link fence with privacy slots satisfies that. Um, I guess that's, that's up to, uh, you know, some, some debate, which we can talk about. But it, it was clear that it was expected to be built with phase one. Um, and generally the, the lighter gray is, is the future phase improvements and the darker colors are, are what was planned on this part of the plan. And it does appear that the fence was, was planned to go around the property in phase one. We just don't really know what it was and exactly where it was gonna go was gonna be determined by the owner. So that's where we're at.
All right, I'll just speak my opinion again. I feel like something needs to go behind that, the residential home right there, Mr. Robinson, for sure. I don't know, but I feel like they need to build a fence right now around the entire property because all of the other property is, A, not annexed into the city or, and B, it's not even developed. Um, and then we could also argue about when, cause we have some petitions to annex or in the wings that will probably be zoned residential, which will need a fence. Who would we require then to build the fence? Do you know what I mean? Like, when they start to build it out?
They would have to build the fence.
Who? Them or the property owners?
If it's their property, uh, if it's their property on commercial, butting residential, it's in theory their, their...
But it wasn't when they first put it in.
It doesn't matter. Then you have to make them put the whole fence in now. So like, if you wanna be lenient on it, which is fine, you block them off on all the residential right now that's existing and tell them when it happens later, you do it later. But if they don't do it later, then you pull the conditional use permit.
I think the vagueness in our code right now is, who, who puts in a, a fence that's, that its purpose is to separate commercial and residential? What isn't vague is that an RV park requires a fence around the whole thing.
Right.
The only question is, is do we give some latitude and allow them to put it in as it's phaseally done? And what should that fence be, um, or what are we comfortable with? You guys would like to do a chain link with privacy slots, is that correct?
Yes.
Have you looked at any other styles of fence that would, that would be not as expensive as a full block wall or anything like that?
Well, uh, vinyl fencing right now is fairly inexpensive, but the problem with the vinyl, wind damage. Who throws a rock through it? Who's gonna pay to repair it?
Deer.
Yeah, the deer, whatever else. It, it's just a matter of, it's just not, I, I, as far as mine is concerned, it's not a permanent fence. It looks nice, whatever, but I put one up on my property over in Beaver and in a matter of ten years, we're replacing the majority of it. You know, it just, I don't like it. So chain link with privacy slots would be the optimal way to do it.
See, I'm not game with chain link. And your engineer does show that going down that easement is actually drawn in there, that fence going down, but we...
He put the square system, makes it look like...
We, we're, I don't care if you do that. Like, it's, it's an easement or a road.
Well, and I don't think, um...
Oh, Mr. Robinson doesn't want his trees taken out.
Right, that's what he doesn't want to say. He doesn't want those taken out.
One, one thing that I noticed is the, the only type of fence that it specifies are... One, one thing that I noticed is the, the only type of fence that it specifies, or at least calls out is hedges, we all know what hedges are, but everything else is, you know, kind of, kind of up in the air in terms of the type of fence, and...
I think the c- I think the code, it doesn't, I don't know if it says it on the plans, but I think the code actually, um, describes the height of the fence, maybe, I'm gonna double check that, I could be wrong.
Problem with hedges is that you need to have them to a certain height, and how are you gonna obtain that now? That's a problem.
That'd be something that we'd have to, I mean, we'd have to look at that as far as, uh, nurseries and see how big hedges they provide.
Does Mr. Robinson care about that entrance, I mean, as far as lights shining, or any, you know, noises, or anything, I mean, you know, the easement, the entrance?
Scott, have you ta- you've talked with him, haven't you?
With who?
Mr. Robinson.
I, I spoke with, uh, Connie, and I spoke with his brother.
Like, do they, like, I don't think, last I heard, they don't want anything down...
The drive.
Down the drives, because they don't want to take out the trees.
Yeah, I didn't...
I don't...
The last I talked to them, they wanted something to block the noise, block the view, block, uh...
In the back.
In the backyard.
In the back.
Well, I thought if they wanted something down the drive, you could put the chain link fence with the slats in it, so the light doesn't hit the house, and you wouldn't lose the trees.
It would.
Well, the problem is the trees are on the property line, so you'd have to put the fence not on the property line, which we wouldn't want them to do, i- if this eventually becomes the road like it is on our transportation master plan, we wouldn't want a fence not on the property line. Um, this is what the code says on screening, and it does address the height, um, says the RV park shall be adequately screened using walls, permanent solid fences, and/or hedges of at least six feet in height from other surrounding property to limit noise and trespassing, that was, that's the intent, limit noise and trespassing. And I would think that almost any of the fences we're describing right now would limit noise and trespassing, obviously at different levels.
And to me, it says walls. Chain link is not a wall, so, it's not a permanent solid. And that's as bad as if you go off of your plans and off your, your front, it tells you to do a solid fence and hedges, so in theory, you go back to the new one, it's and, or, and or, but in theory, yours is saying both, so...
What are you saying, because it says combination of?
Yeah, combination of permanent fences and hedges, and we're not saying, the new co- what the ordinance says, and/or hedges.
So what does a solid fence mean?
Me, it's a solid fence definition as wall.
We have a definition of a permanent solid fence in our code and our definitions, and if not...
Well, it says wall.
Permanent solid fence.
Our code now says wall, and I don't know what it said back then, we did adjust this code, we could look into that, but, or we can define it in our conditional use permit and move forward. I'm gonna check and see if it's there. I doubt it.
Just for clarity for me, just because I'm curious enough to ask the question, so is there just an objection to a block wall just behind that resident, with obviously that being his preference?
The thing with this is, I was talking to Dan the other day, if you, if you put a block wall behind that residence, Leland Page and his sons, who are attorneys, they're gonna require the block wall behind theirs, or they're gonna come and fight it, because they're residents as well, they're residential. So now you're taking the fence from one all the way down, and then, in the future, what's gonna happen, I mean, say we want to put up the chain link fence on the north side, was to say that's not, not residential, you know, so you're, I really feel that you're setting precedents by saying that this one section, we're gonna make you do a block wall, then you can do a chain link the rest of the way. I just think it's gonna open up a can of worms with everybody that comes in.
Makes sense, so you're saying where you're sitting today, you're saying a flatted chain link fence around the whole phase one, or around the whole project?
As of right now, phase one, as we, as we develop, or if, if we have the money to where we can do it, we'll be happy to do it. But like, the backside or the, the west side of the property, that's our partners, that's Rick's, he doesn't want a fence, he goes, what if we develop and, and make it a bigger park? He goes, why would I want a fence there? So he just says, I...
So Scott referred to this parcel here just a second ago, and now he's referring to this parcel here and this parcel, these are owned by Rick, this is the other property owner who, there's a house here, and tha- and that's clearly a residential use, there's a house on it, this one doesn't have a house on it, but there's believed to be some intention to build a house on it in the future. These are obviously commercial properties here.
Dan, can you pull the, that plan back up?
Absolutely.
In the definition, um, I can't see it that well, the paragraph that has the fencing in there states the purpose of the fence, which is trespassing and...
Noise.
It doesn't state it here, it, it states the purpose of it in our code.
Oh, it's in the code.
And it says for sound and trespassing. This says owner plans to provide required screening through a combination of permanent solid fences and hedges, exact location per owner, which is weird, exact location should just be the property boundary, um, I don't know why that was put that way, but unless it was location meaning hedges, fence, hedges, you know, maybe that's what that means, I don't know. Dan, could you, I'm gonna say something, um, can you go down to the bottom page again, where it just states the fence? So, uh, just get me right, just a question, permanent screen fence per city ordinance completed with phase one, how many feet of fence do you have up right now that you've installed?
Zero.
Okay.
Okay, so, I mean, and I didn't want to go back to the whole story, but a lot of you, some of you were here, some of you weren't. When we went to annex this property into the city, we understood that we went through the city to do it, well, then the state passed a law that we had to go through the county, which we were the first ones to start annexing through the county that the county's ever done, so it's a matter of, we paved the way. Instead of it taking a three-month period to do the annexation, it took us over a year to do the annexation because of all the new rules and regulations that we had to go through, that people didn't know about. And I don't know if it's still the way it is now, but the checklist that was made up as far as going through annexation was built by our attorney that everybody was using at that point in time to annex, annex in. Then we hit with COVID, and with COVID, it burned up well over a million dollars, that was our slush fund to be putting in the fence, to be putting in the swimming pool, to put in the dog park, to do all that, and COVID ate all that up, so...
You say COVID, you mean the inflation and supply chain problems?
Yeah, exactly, during, during that period of time. So all of this slush fund that we had, that we were gonna do everything with, it went to just get the park done. And we are, we were already in it to the point that we couldn't back out, we had already signed with the bank, we had already, you know, it was a matter of, we were committed. And so, yes, we're wrong, the fence isn't in, it's our fault, but it's something like, said, hopefully we can work today, that we can say, over a period of time, we can get that fence, the first phase done, and that's something that we'll, we'll drive ourselves to do, is to get that done in that time period.
Because you're actually halfway through phase two.
No, we haven't even started phase two.
Can I read an article from JC quoting him? Can I quote something from JC? Or Casey, sorry, Casey.
Oh, Casey, yeah.
Um, the first, this is your grand, you know, it was in the newspaper and stuff, says, quote, "The first phase will have six to eight RV pads," you have that. He said, "Phase two will include more amenities, like a pool, we're gonna have cabins, pavilions for family reunions, pickleball courts, we're gonna build those in phase two, and then depending on upon how phase one goes, it'll dictate how many other RV pads we do, but we could double the number of RV pads." So that's great news, but in his words, the pool and the pickleball courts are part of phase two.
What do the plans show?
What are plans, they're originally in phase one.
And as the, as these parts move around with the challenges of a project like this, some priorities get shifted in terms of actual phases.
Okay.
As far as sites go, it's phase one.
So actually, the, the priority was to, to, to do the fence, part of the ordinance, that's the only question I, you know, I, I, that's the only thing I question, so, um, that's it.
I don't think anybody here wants to require you to fence the whole thing against some of those other, and if I'm wrong, correct me, uh, against those properties that aren't annexed and so forth, so I just, you know, let's just get this done against these residents, because they, they have rights, just like you, and we need to protect them, we just need to move forward, do it.
So what kind of fence should we allow them to build, because I guess technically, we can put whatever we want in this conditional use permit?
I, I think a chain link with slats is sufficient.
How's that soundproof?
S- I think slats reflect, it's not exactly like a block wall, they're different things.
You know, reflect, nothing.
I don't know.
Well...
I know, but if we're talking about...
It's not soundproof, we meant one condition, that we put up kind of a fence.
But let's talk like about affordability too, I know that's not our problem to...
It's not our problem.
You know, I know that's not our problem, but I know what a block wall costs, they're expensive.
But if they have to put a clear around, and we set a precedent, that, that's what kinda concerns me, because if they're gonna, th- these other, uh, properties, they're not defined, and I know they have the property line...
But there's not a home on...
But they won't know what exact use they'll be that you're fencing against.
I don't mind seeing it in phases, well, definitely, behind Ra- Robinson's, right there, get that up, and I don't, I personally don't care if it's a chain link with slats.
Doesn't that deflect any noise? I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
No.
Not really.
No.
Yeah.
Well, the campground has rules after ten o'clock, you have to be quiet.
I think you could make the argument too, that hedges don't block sound, and if it's a six-foot fence, and I'm six feet tall, the noise is gonna travel, you know, over a six-foot fence. And I would also say that we should consider Mr. Robinson and his, what, maybe he doesn't want, you know, a certain type, type of fence, and bring him into the conversation a little bit, I think.
Scott, did he tell you he wanted a block wall?
The last I heard, he wanted a cinder block wall, I don't know anything about the lawyers or somebody else that would object, I don't know about the tree being taken out or not taken out, I just know that, um, in his words, he's been fairly patient, he is...
And I, I agree with that, one thing I was gonna say, if, in all honesty, if we would've put the chain link fence up the first day, it, this wouldn't even be a question.
Exactly, and that, and maybe that's all you're required to do.
It would've been for me.
Phase one is done, and it's a conditional use permit, they can...
Solid fences, yeah.
I know, but you were non-counciled.
That doesn't matter, though, like, if that was me and I was that resident, I'd be torrid.
Well, I kinda agree with, with Councilman Harris, it says right on here, combination of permanent solid fences and, and hedges. And chain link is not solid.
So you're gonna make him put, so are you wanting them to do, like a solid, like a block wall and hedges, or just a block wall?
No.
Is wood considered a solid fence? I mean, that's what I'm saying, what do you, what do you, if you look...
See, that, that's the thing to me, like, honestly, wood is gonna block the noise, wood is going to do the...
And wood's gonna rot and go away, so then who's responsible to take care of that, who's responsible to replace it?
That's you. That's you.
Okay, so you're, you're, you're asking us to put something up that we're gonna have to replace every ten years?
That's business, so...
Well, that, to me, that would be his choice to put the wood or the, or the block wall.
I, I don't think anybody's try- I, I think what they're trying to do is, unless you want to change the code, I mean, the language is the language, says a solid fence, you can debate what a solid fence is, um, we say wood, and then you say, well, wood's gonna rot, you can say vinyl, well, at Beaver, and that was no good. You can say cinder block, I think we'd all agree, all those are solid, but that's too expensive, and so your solution is something other than a solid fence, so we'd have, we would have to change the ordinance.
I mean, if you look up the de- definition of a solid fence, chain link fence with slats in there is a solid fence.
It's not a noise blocker.
But it is a solid fence.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't meet all the code ordinance requirements.
Will you put the ordinance back up, Dan?
Yep.
Oh, I was looking for definitions, the only thing I found was fence, and it didn't add anything, "A physical barrier to delineate, contain, or designate an area designed for a specific use." Closure for a dwelling uni- area for storage, so, sorry, that's all there was. Screening, each RV park shall be adequately screened using walls, permanent solid fences, and/or hedges of at least six feet in height from the other surrounding property to limit noise and trespassing.
So reading that says if we can find six-foot hedges, we can put them in there, and that's gonna suffice.
Get them all touching nice and tight, and if it stops people from going through it.
Nothing's gonna stop anybody, people can climb a fence.
I get that, if you want to get through or over or whatever, you're gonna do it.
Exactly.
I think it's just meant to limit them, not to prevent. We don't want razor wire on top of it.
Or do we?
Or do we?
So I guess if you find out what the definition of permanent solid fence is, because there's the options, walls, permanent solid fences, and/or...
Well, and back to Rochelle's point, um, this is offering a conditional use permit, and you can put additional conditions in order to grant the longer stay above what that is, but it doesn't sound like there's a real consensus, unless we eventually have a motion and a vote, but I think you could define that right now and make it part of your conditional use requirement, based on what you'd like to see.
Um, just from what I've learned about pickleball and, uh, mitigation on sound, it's often practiced to plant trees to help with sound mitigation, and what if there's a consideration for the chain link with the slats within a shrub row where there's residents? Because that at least answers the sound.
Would we have to have those hedges at six feet taller, coming by them smaller, whether they're inexpensive, and then have them grow into it?
I would feel that it would be reasonable to give them time to grow, but I know that, like, that really truly is a solution for noise at pickleball courts, because it's just like fabric in a room with a lot of sound, or carpets on the floor, or whatever, it does absorb sound to have, I'll just call it textiles, and so in the case of shrubbery, I believe it would help with the sound mitigation.
Yeah, but you're talking motor homes, diesel trucks, compared to a ball being smacked by a paddle, so it's a little different noise.
But I feel like their noise is pulling in and pulling out.
Yes, mm, consideration, it's, I don't know, I'd be a very unhappy resident if that was me, so...
We could throw a motion out and see where we stand, if anyone's ready to make one. Or we could keep discussing.
I, I could add a bit of commentary, and it won't... I, I could add a bit of commentary and it won't be helpful. I read the email about reference to your attorney and, um, I don't know. It just struck me as you saw this as something to negotiate or to barter or to argue. Gotta let me finish, you can talk, uh, about what you're gonna do, what you're not gonna do, and then we'll come back. It's a conditional use permit. You have a use of the property that is conditioned upon doing certain things, and there's a reason for that because certain uses, over time, governments have found that we approved this and then they didn't do what was required. And so the city is kind of, and if I were representing you, I would've said, the city has all the cards here. The city can, can stop your use of the property until conditions are met, including putting a fence around on Phase One, which was evidently required. I wasn't hearing, most of the council was, and that was approved this basis, Phase One. You're gonna have a fence all the way around it. And I think we all get COVID. COVID's been over for a while. And, and you have to make business decisions, and I certainly understand that. None of us are invested in this like you are, and that is huge. We get that. But to come before the city council and argue about what is a fence and what is and, and what's, you know, required, or what is Mr. Robinson want or not, or, and I think the tone of the email was, well, we'll decide what we're gonna do and get back to you if we can't, you know, kind of find a path that's beneficial to us. They have the power to say, your use on that property is hereby ceased. You can't use it anymore. It's no longer permitted until you do this. And so that's why they're here tonight, discussing, and, and they say, well, you haven't done this. And that, that I think they'll be reasonable and give you time and, but to sit and talk about, well, that's no good. We don't want wood. Well, I'm six feet tall. I'm, we're not gonna have that high. Or it doesn't block the sound, or it does. I mean, it is what it is. And so I, I would just urge you to try and help them help you.
Okay, so one reason that, that the letter was presented is because when we left last week, we were under the impression that we had to do a seven-foot wall all the way around our park. That it was gonna be a seven-foot block wall completely surrounding our park.
I think you misunderstood that because-
And see, well, that's it, is that we had a misunderstanding, and that's, well, when we walked outside, all four of us were sitting there going like, holy crap, we gotta do a seven-foot block wall right now around our whole park?
I know, and when I, yeah, when I ch- chatted with you this week, I was like, that was not our intention.
Yeah.
I could only really speak for me, but I knew that that's not what we, we were not.
But see, our interpretation, our understanding without the clarification or whatever, for me, I- we walked out and we're going like, holy moly, we're looking at six hundred thousand dollars.
So we don't keep going over and over and over.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
What does everybody think about asking Mr. Robinson what he would like to see and which, which one he prefers, or does he mind the slats?
Didn't he already tell Scott? Block wall?
Have you talked directly to that homeowner by chance?
Other than when we, uh, first when they started doing everything, no, I haven't gone back and visited with him. I've seen him. I've helped him shovel his drive. I've helped do that, but no, I haven't talked to him about this.
But this way, talking to, or, or Scott talking or that, we've, we've got two, two choices. Block wall or the slats, and he can tell us which one he wants. I myself think he should get what he wants. He was there first. You guys are building in, you know, your business, and that's interfering with, with his. I mean, I was back there looking, and I wouldn't want, I don't even like the entrance because the lights, when you turn into it, goes right into his house. But when I was out there, a guy was working on his car in the road, that corner there. But I think we should, this is just my opinion, my opinion only. I think we should ask him between the two what he wants. 'Cause he might, he might say the slats are okay. He might.
Okay.
So if he says he wants a block wall, would you say then, then you would also put it in your recommendation that that does not set some precedent that there has to be a block wall everywhere? Anybody wants it, or what? How would you address it?
You're not supposed to ask those kind of questions.
And likewise, we would then have to adopt that a chain link fence with slats and it constitutes a solid fence.
Well, to me, a chain link fence with slats is not solid. You can see through it.
Well, and we would have to change our definition.
You know.
Permanent solid fence is what we're operating under tonight on April twenty-fourth.
It's all semantics, really.
And I just wanna find a resolution so we can put this in our pocket and move on, you know? And I'm sure you do too.
Yeah, and I just wanna clarify one thing. If he says what he wants, everybody else is gonna have the opportunity to say what they want as well.
That's what, that's what-
I'm just saying, are we gonna clarify that, or what's, what's gonna happen?
That's what Dan was saying, for the other ones. He gonna let them decide too. That's what he said.
Well, then I guess you can motion the table.
Until you talk, until the property owners talk.
Yeah, until you talk to the property owner and see what he says. By me, it's a solid wall. That's a cinder block fence, and I would, I'm okay with it being done in phases. Like, not all at once, I get it. But to me, it's cinder block wall around that whole thing if it's being buttoned up against residential property. How you and commercial want to handle it, I guess you could change that up, but... But with the residents, it's a block wall. So I'll motion to table it, until they talk to Mr. Robinson, but I don't think this is pointless, but...
All right, we have a motion on the table, so that either gets a second or it dies.
I guess second.
All right. All those in favor of tabling it?
Aye. Aye.
Nay.
I'm gonna say nay, but I hate to because we gotta go, we gotta get it decided. But I'll say nay.
Councilmember Burton, are you thinking about it?
Oh, he's thinking.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
So why are you staring at the computer?
So if we don't table it, what are we gonna do?
We're gonna sit here for another half hour, hour?
Yeah, y'all wanna talk, Mr. Robinson, let's go have a chat.
Substitute motion, if it doesn't, if it doesn't pass.
Then somebody else will make another motion.
I just, I want it resolved, so I'll just have, nay.
So I'm gonna make a motion to allow them to build a chain link fence with slats and put sh- some sort of shrubbery that can grow into a privacy, at least behind, like, let you do it phasely. Like, start behind the property owner that's currently there. And then as you can do it phasely, you can build it around the entire property.
Do you have a time limit when that chain link fence can be installed?
I'm gonna say in the next three months.
It only takes two days to put a chain link fence up.
Oh, yeah, get that in behind the, the property owner.
Like, as soon as you can, but-
Are you talking about the whole thing?
No.
No, I said phasely, like, starting behind his property.
But I, yeah, and, you know, I, you're talking time, but that will look nice when those hedges grow.
So according to the Google, shrubs take three to five years to fully mature and establish themselves. But they're cheap when you buy them little. That's not as much of a cost consideration as if you're trying to bu- buy and put in mature ones, so. Just for the, just to e- educate what is on the table is a motion. But I don't think your motion is done. Did you have a, a time limit?
I said within three months.
Oh, yeah.
Or as soon as possible, you know?
I think that that could be done in before that, behind the residence.
I would think within the month they could.
Yeah.
At least the fence.
Don't you? Just behind the residence, you could get that chain link in?
Uh, I'll let you guys decide.
So I'll change it to, we'll give, get it in quick, within a month, okay? Within a month.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Absolute no.
All right. Do you understand the council's motion? Okay, it's a four-to-one vote, so that passes. Right?
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. All right, moving now to joining the Iron Springs project of the inland port. This one is not gonna be as hard. If it is, no, this is an, this is a fantastic item on the agenda. We've been working with Danny Stewart. I think that some of you remember him, if not all the council, some of the public remembers him coming to the last meeting and introducing us to this project. And we're now to a point of resolution to join the inland port.
And I did send out a substitute resolution to everybody just late this afternoon. Um, upon Danny's advice, after talking with, oh, my laptop hasn't synced up with the new file yet. But I'll grab it. Upon Danny's recommendation, after talking to, um, I don't know, legal, smart people, who did you talk to that said we should pull the parcels out?
Th- this is after talking, or just seeing how, uh, working with thirty-eight different communities who have passed resolutions, either at the county or the city level, determined that it was easier not to have to identify parcels in the initial resolution, that this resolution is general, and then we work out those details as we work on specific projects within the area. And, and specifically, the, the parcels that you had submitted, we'll work those into the project area plan before we submit that to the inland port authority board.
But for reference, for those that are here and, um, and the council, um, generally what we're talking about is the area, the industrially, industrial-sown property around the airport, which, which we have identified loosely as our, our industrial park. Um, I'm gonna pull up a, and I apologize, it's not a fancy map. Danny asked me if I could create something that showed generally what we're talking about. Um, so all of the parcels, all of the property that is owned within this, um, we do have a verbal and, uh, commitment from those property owners to want to be involved in the, in the inland port. And of course, it will get further designated as there's projects and things like that. But, but everybody that's, that's on that is, it's either the city or there's a couple of private property owners that are, that are inside the industrial park and do want to be, um, involved in discussions moving forward. So as everybody here knows what we're talking about, we're talking about designating an area something like this to be included into the inland port. Danny, why don't you go ahead and?
Sure. So this resolution just starts, uh, the discussion wi- between the community and the inland port authority. We're governed by a, a board of directors. They meet most every month. Um, this type of a process, once this resolution is adopted by the city, if that's what you choose to do, then myself and my staff work with, uh, with your city staff to make sure that we've identified the parcels. Uh, we get a legal description. We get a correct map by working with you. Uh, we put that into the existing project area plan for the Iron Springs inland port as amendment number two. This would be the second amendment since it was created in twenty-twenty-three.
And you're amending it anyways.
Yeah, we are-
There's other parcels in Cedar projects that are, that are, there, so you're gonna be going to the board about an amendment regardless, right?
That's correct. And with a dozen project areas, the Iron Springs project area will only go to the inland port board once a year. They've asked that we don't turn every single board meeting into, uh, changing boundaries for twelve different project areas. So we're looking at either, uh, most likely this would be a, I'm trying to remember what the board said. This would probably be a May and June. So our, the, our board would hear this the last week of May and vote on it the last week of June. If we can get all of those things, otherwise it would be a June-August. Um, so we'll see how it goes, uh, time-wise. That depends on our board and, and what they have on their thing. But what this does, it just designates this area in Parowan. We have an agreement with, uh, Parowan City that we're designating this as part of our project area. Um, it's, as I explained before, it makes it very similar to a redevelopment, uh, project area where we can use the tools that we discussed before, the Ed Tiff financing and, and those sorts of things to help, uh, invest in infrastructure and whatever else the community needs to be able to develop out this business park as you would like.
And, and obviously, this is the first step. This does not, um, this is not encumber the city, um, to do anything until we figure out what it is that we want to do, right? This is just, starts to, and if, and if the, the inland port, uh, authority says no, then this thing dies right there. If they say, yeah, okay, let's look at it, then we continue to work on it, with the council being in the driver's seat, right?
Right. And as far as actual business goes, this resolution would be the only action that you need to take to make this happen. Everything else happens between the port authority and city staff. Um, I'm sure the staff will want to update you and make sure that you approve of that. Um, it doesn't have to be done officially by resolution or ordinance. This is the only action that, that is required. The other act-
That even when a project comes, when we actually have a project that's ready to trigger Tiff?
No, that, that all comes back to you as well. So we'll work with, with Parowan City to determine how we want to trigger a parcel and begin a project, whether that's offering incentives to recruit a business, whether that's investing in the infrastructure that's needed to make that happen.
And the reason why I'm pointing that out so much is they need to know how heavy of a decision this is tonight. Is this, they never gonna look at this again, and now we've set all these things into motion, or whether there will be, um, some additional, um, off-ramps or decision points or whatnot as we actually have some projects.
Right. Uh, it, this just designates the area. So there won't be another major decision until, as Dan mentioned, a, a project comes up. And then we always take the lead of the community. We're not going to come in and force things to happen that don't fit here, so we'll always take your lead on that. I, I can give an example of something that's going to our board next week in Beaver County. They designated a very large block north of Milford where all of that, uh, uh, solar and wind and geothermal is taking place out there. And we designated that area a year and a half ago, and they started looking at a specific, uh, solar energy project, and they decided, we're gonna take some of the property out because our local RDA can, tools work better in this case for this solar project than the port tools. And we're flexible that way, so, uh, we can add to or take away in the future as, as needed and as directed by the community.
The only other thing to say is we did take it to Economic Development Committee. We didn't have a forum, but we discussed it. The only other thing to say is we did take it to Economic Development Committee. We didn't have a forum, but we discussed it. So there's no official decision, but they thought it sounded great. We've been talking about doing something like this with a city RDA for quite some time. Um, to set, to go through the, all of the hoops and, and steps to set up a city RDA is a lot of administrative work, not to mention all the negotiation that we'll have to do with the individual property, um, entities like the school district and so forth. This is a shortcut and to do what we've talked about doing for years. And really, we partner with the inland port who, who is, is what, does this on steroids, bring projects, um, help us market it, help us manage it, um, actually handle all the accounting and the custodial function of the funds. So from my perspective and my opinion, my recommendation is it's a no-brainer. But that's, that's me, but I'm the one that has to do most of the work. We go the other route, so.
Can you remind me of the percentages?
The percentages are hard fixed. Dan can tell us about that.
And the year?
Sure.
I remember you telling us that.
Yeah, it's seventy-five percent of the new tax increment on top of a property for twenty-five years.
And what happens with that gets to be determined by us. It can be used as incentive to incentivize a, a manufacturer or somebody to come in. It could be used to make a bond payment on infrastructure, to help develop the, the park, to then help bring people in. Um, we can say we want to incentivize certain types of businesses. We may say we want aeronautical, or we want high-tech, or we want manufacturing, or we want certain jobs of, that pay a certain amount, and that's how you qualify. Like, we could talk about this all day, right Danny? I mean, it's-
Yeah, it's extremely flexible.
Very open-ended at this point as well.
Yeah, of the seventy-five percent, the port does retain five percent of that as admin. But the rest of that is really up to you on how that's going to be divided, whether it's incentives or infrastructure investment, or however that would be. It is all post-performance, but it is possible also to use that differential to help service, uh, a public infrastructure district or those sorts of things if you need bond financing upfront for something that you just determined that you want to do.
Now, this is really important because we are going after a large grant, um, in the neighborhood of seven million dollars to try to get, to build a new road and put infrastructure back to the park. If we don't get that grant, we're still trying to figure out how to do that. We could potentially use this to finance and fund that.
Yeah.
So a question, I noticed there's other property owners involved. How does that work?
So the, the beauty of this, I, I once, once had a, a strong disagreement with somebody who may or may not be a mayor, not of our city, and said the government shouldn't get involved in this. Danny knows this person well. The government shouldn't do these types of things because we're picking winners and losers. And, and actually, the beauty of this is we don't. We set a fertile ground in an area where the city really needs to see something. Right now, we have a bunch of sagebrush surrounding our airport. It's doing no good for anybody. Um, this allows us to provide some tools, to provide a little bit of a fertile ground. And then if somebody wants to participate, they come to us with an idea. All we've done is put some guardrails on it and say, we'd like to see it look something like this. They can still go ahead and build whatever they want and not participate, so it doesn't take away any of their property rights. It provides a little bit of an incentive if they want to do something in alignment with what the city wants to incentivize. So it's kind of a, if you want to partner with us and do this, we have some incentives to do it. And if you don't, you still have all of your property rights and you can do whatever you want, so.
That, that's right. And if that were to happen, if someone were just to come in and buy the property and move ahead, and we determine not to trigger that parcel for anything, then the property taxes would continue to flow to the taxing entities as normal.
So these other property owners identified, they have agreed to participate?
They want, they're excited because they know that this helps them either develop the site themselves or potentially market their property to somebody else to come in and do something. So no, they're excited about it. There isn't one of the people included in those parcels that isn't excited, so.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion if there is any other discussion to, uh, for, to approve the resolutions to, uh, what is it, join the Iron Springs project of inland port, resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh three.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, it is a roll call vote. We'll start with, I'm going to put Councilmember Topham on the spot again.
You can do that.
Okay.
Rochelle Topham, aye.
David Harris, aye.
John Dean, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
David Burton, aye.
Right.
Thanks Danny for coming. We'll be in, talking a lot.
Yep, we'll put you to work.
Hey, real quick, on the subject, you want to tell us about our visit with Congresswoman Malloy, um, just a couple days ago on this subject?
Yeah, this, this was a good opportunity. She, uh, we brought her, invited her to come, knew she was coming to town, and asked if she could take a little over an hour to meet with, um, anyone who has an interest in the Iron Springs project area and to learn more about that, and also just to ask general questions. And I thought it was really positive and very productive. Um, for her, her District Two includes eight inland port project areas from Salt Lake City all the way down to here. And she's been pretty well-versed in that, but it was really exciting to show her the things that have been happening here in the past two years since our project area was started. It's been a lot of things happening in the Iron Springs area west of Cedar City and, and, uh, anyway, it was, I thought it was really good. If you have anything to add to that, that's pretty general.
No, it, it was exciting to have her there and see that. Many times things, if to really get them off the ground, you've got to, um, have federal support. One of the things brought up in that meeting was some of the large, big partners in the inland port over there are having a hard time getting their power needs, um, taken care of by Rocky Mountain Power. See, we're not the only ones with power issues, and it's really related to transmission. And in, a great discussion, um, came out of that about, um, opening up the permitting on nuclear, which, which we've talked about quite a lot.
Yeah.
So it's good to have her there. And for the record, she sat by me, Addie, not the other way around. There was a picture out there, said I was brown-nosing and sat by herself. We love Congresswoman Malloy. She is a great representative for us, but.
She is. And, and just so you're aware, when it comes to issues like power and those things, um, the fact that we have twelve and as of next week, thirteen, a baker's dozen project areas across the state, we're all looking at solving these same things. And power is a big deal, not just in Utah, but coast to coast. And as we work together as a statewide body, that gives us some power and some leverage as we work to help these communities solve these sorts of things. So we're excited to tackle some of those things together with you.
Thanks Danny.
Thanks Dan.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Alright, moving now to item number twelve. This is the discussion and decision on land ownership, the land ownership portion of Legacy B Estates Development Agreement. And so basically, we've kind of gone around and around, and I think the council has asked a lot of questions of the business model. And the business model has been a big part of the discussion in terms of a decision here. And, and as we ask questions about different aspects, um, you know, I think we've all done a lot of homework, which is a great opportunity to learn more. And as part of that, and we heard a lot from Councilmember Dean, we've heard from Councilmember Downey, um, I know that both of them did quite a bit of homework on this topic. And some of the other comments I've heard from the council, this hasn't been taken lightly. And so we decided to bring it to the agenda instead of diving into all the intricacies of a development agreement and business model and how it works and, you know, judgment calls on what different things look like or are. We just needed to talk about probably the biggest component of this, which is an ordinance that would need to change or be adjusted if we were going to allow, um, rentable spots in the RV park. So, um, it's not an RV park, sorry, mobile home park. I even wrote notes to myself. I said, these are manufactured homes, but because of our ordinance, we are calling them mobile homes. And that's just because we don't have an ordinance specifically for manufactured homes, um, or manufactured home park. And, um, they can be moved, but historically they do stay in place. And it's somewhere, sometimes twenty, thirty years they stay in place. And so just traditionally, they do stay in place. It's more of a model where they're not moved a lot, and if they are, it's not common. Is that correct?
Correct.
Um, so it's a lease, it's a leasing structure. So you have tenants that lease and there's park approval associated with that. And again, for this model, this model of business, it's, those are both very standard things. Um, I liked how we heard in our public comment that that's actually a more common, to have leased land under these parks. Um, the other things that we talked about, we talked about so many different things. But just to kind of echo, um, Janelle Zajak, I did some research myself with other mayors, because I always feel like, I jokingly say it used to be we didn't get the music, we didn't get the fashion till like ten or twenty years later, but now we all have, you know, phones. So we get to see those things almost immediately. But this is a trend that's been going on. We just haven't seen as much of it in Parowan. In Utah, I wanted to find out how common it was. So at my mayor roundtable meeting, I asked the group of mayors there, do you ever see this? Is this something that you're familiar with? And I was surprised to hear that they were all familiar with it. They were like, oh, you guys don't have one? I said, no, we don't. And so just digging a little deeper, Mayor Billings and Hurrican said they had two and they just approved three more because it really was a path and a housing option for affordable housing. And then I talked to the mayor of, um, Bountiful, and her name is Kendalyn Harris. And she said, actually, it's a, it's a very good solution for affordable housing. She was also very straightforward. And so I think it's, again, one of those things, we haven't seen it before. We're so protective of Parowan, we're so protective of our residents. But I think we have to separate the land use from the business model. And I think that's where a lot of our questions have been focused. But probably the most compelling piece of information, um, was that Mayor Billings' daughter bought one that was in a twenty-year-old park in twenty nineteen, and her unit is now worth a hundred and twenty thousand. And so for five years, she's been paying rent, basically on her lot. She pays six hundred dollars a month, and she has an equity position. And I have multiple kids who paid rent and have no equity position. Their only hope five years later is they get their deposit back. And a lot of the time, they don't even get their deposit back. So I definitely, I mean, taking a position, I don't have a vote, but I do see it as a pathway to building equity and to homeownership, which is an American dream that shouldn't be dead. So that's my position.
Thank you. So are there any other questions that we've, that you guys have for us? I think we've kind of answered everything. Just like to see us here and we keep coming back.
Well, and we could get into further details on the, on the agreement, but, but frankly, this is such a, this is a why in the road, and how we write that development agreement depends on this. Um, so if we can get this resolved, then we can move forward with the fine-tuning of the rest of the development agreement rather quickly, and these guys can finally get off of being paused. Or if, if we say we're not comfortable with that, they're going to have to figure out if they can even make this thing work as a standard subdivision, or if they want to. So we've just got to make this determination so we can move forward in, with either path forward.
And then is that development agreement going to come back to us, or is that-
Absolutely. No, this would just be, the development agreement, we can put it on the very next agenda. Um, there's a draft of it out there. Um, then it just comes down to, you know, exactly whether we want them. Normally, all of the questions would be answered in a subdivision process with a plat and all of that stuff, since, since this model doesn't have a subdivision plat, there's no preliminary plat, final plat, which spells out all this stuff, which is why we need a development agreement. So we have written a draft, you guys have a copy of it, they have a copy of it. We can do, we can get there on these details, but it all hinges on whether or not we're going to allow no ownership of the, of the land or not to be a thing. Um, there's no point spending any time on the development agreement until we answer this question. That's why we have it on the agenda to answer it. So in, in saying yes, you were going to vote for it or not, know that we'll come back with the rest of it. Don't get too hung up on the other details, is all I'm saying.
Well, I think this is just a way that we can have the younger people start getting homes. We've ma, we've got our homes, but it's so much harder now, and we need it. There is, you, the homes sell here for minimum three eighty, four hundred minimum. And I think Brody, you said it would be like rent and a payment for your largest model would be around two thousand dollars. And new homes to rent is like thirty-five hundred dollars. I mean, I'm scared for my grandkids, and I hate to even think about my future great-grand that I get next month. You know? But I think it's, I think it's a good deal.
Thank you.
Need a motion.
The motion would just be?
Yeah, like what are, what are we motioning?
It would be to allow-
Motioning to allow, yeah.
Um-
A rental of property.
Yeah, land lease. I mean, do you have language that would be appropriate for them?
Yeah, like what's the best way to say?
Land leases opposed to ownership in a, in a mobile home park.
Yep.
We'd be changing an ordinance.
No, what we need to do is if we're going to allow this, we're going to, we're going to allow a variance because where we're at logically in our code says that they need to, in a mobile home park, and they are mobile homes until they are attached, and their model does not attach them legally, not physically they're attached, but, and since that's the case, we would have to allow, have a variance to that part of the code on this development agreement. So what you're, what you're going to make a motion, if you want to do a motion for, is that we, I make a motion to allow a variant, to, to allow them a variance on that aspect of the development agreement. Does that sound good, Scott?
Yeah, yeah, bec, are you, that-
And I'll even tell you exactly what code it is that, so that we can know, so we can have that on the record.
What were you going to say, Scott? You started to say something.
We'd either have to do that or change the code.
Yep.
We'd have to vary from the length.
The code is fourteen dot twenty dot zero four zero, which requires, says said mobile home developments shall include a subdivision or tract of land for the purpose of selling mobile home sites to the land, homeowners. And then it further says, the purpose of this ordinance is to allow mobile homeowners the opportunity to own the land. So we would be allow, having a variance to that section of the code. And we would put that in our development agreement. So that's all we're doing if, if you choose to allow it.
Well, I'll make a motion to allow a variance on the land ownership portion of Legacy B Estates Development Agreement. Is that enough?
Yeah, state that code, would you, and then I think we're good.
State fourteen point two-
Fourteen twenty.
On ordinance fourteen twenty, is that a point?
Point, yeah.
Fourteen point two zero point zero four zero of the Parowan, what is it called?
Mobile Home Plan Unit Development.
Mobile Home Plan Unit Development Code.
I'll second the motion.
Um, so is this a roll call or a regular vote?
It's regular.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright.
How many ayes did we have?
I'll give it a positive.
I'll say aye as well.
So it's three ayes, four ayes.
I just wanted to read a disclaimer.
On your vote?
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
It's easy. On my vote. Just to make it clear, I just want to make sure, um, that my comments, uh, two weeks ago, um, I'm going to abstain from this because I don't want any, any legal matters going to the city. And, uh, so I'm going to abstain from my vote moving forward.
Alright, so we have four ayes and one abstain, so that motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll, we'll bring back the development agreement to work through the details on the rest of the development agreement next week. I mean, next meeting in two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, everybody. Um, we appreciate this very much. And John, no hard feelings whatsoever. So, thanks again.
Thank coming to visit us so much.
I was going to ask where is your hat?
Yeah, where's the hat?
Okay.
Because I didn't recognize him without your hat.
I got a fellow black hat on the council there.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving now out of our action agenda into our work agenda. I was asked to put an item on the agenda for one of our residents of our community, his name is Rory, is Rory Haskell, and he's here this evening. He's no relative of Eddie Haskell, he wanted everyone to know. He actually has had an issue personally on his residence with feral cats, and he didn't know if the council was aware of the problem here, if we were planning on doing anything about it, if we weren't aware of how he feels.
If you aren't aware, I've got a whole lot of suggestions.
Yeah, so, and then I also have asked our police chief to be here this evening, he has some solutions that are already in place for feral cats, and I, just as much as anything, wanted those to be known to the community, because I don't think people even know there are some things in place to help manage the feral cats. So, um, if you'd like to talk about your concerns, that would be fantastic.
So, first, I'd like to say again, my name's Rory Haskell. My wife and I rent a house at one forty-four North Main, right straight across the street from the high school. Annie and Gary Teer live to the south of us, and to the north of us, there's seven kind of apartment home buildings. So, I have an English Bulldog, and I'm gonna go on record that I'm not really a cat person. But, the resident in number seven housing apartment north of me feeds the feral cats every single day. So, a year ago, two years ago, when I moved in, I went over and politely asked him if he wouldn't do it, and unfortunately, I can't repeat to you guys what he told me.
I could guess. I could guess.
Yeah, you can. Um, so, two weeks ago, my English Bulldog, that I keep on a leash in the front yard, he never goes out of it, or the fenced-in backyard, I let him run in, he's never in anybody else's yard, he's got all of his shots, he's a cute little dog, everybody from school walks across the street and says hi to him. But constantly, over the last two years, on a daily basis, I have to go out and pick up cat crap out of my yard, and it stinks like cat urine, and I'm tired of dealing with it. My English Bulldog, last week, got into the cat feces, got sick, vomited, and had diarrhea for two days straight. We took him to the vet, and the vet said if we hadn't brought him in that day, he probably would've died of an intestinal bacteria disease. Four hundred and eighty dollars later, we bring him home, and he's recuperating. But I'm not going to go through that again. So, I am asking for your assistance, your help, but everybody I've talked to in this town in the past two years has the same issue. The only person I've met that I've had a discussion with that is in favor of feral cats and/or feeding them is the guy in apartment seven next to me. And if you would go talk to him, you would realize that he's probably about four bricks shy of a full load. And that's about as nice as I can put it. So, if there's...
I mean, I have that problem in my, in our neighborhood as well.
And...
I mean, I think it's all over.
Last fall, I finally started trapping them. In three weeks, by my little house that I'm renting, I caught ten feral cats in three weeks. And I'm as compassionate as the next person, I don't wanna hurt any animals, I wanna be humane, but I don't see anywhere that a wild feral cat that has never had, uh...
Vaccinations.
Vaccinations, or any medical care from a veterinarian should be considered, I mean, I don't know why they receive any consideration whatsoever. I mean, if somebody wants to feed feral cats, my suggestion is they adopt them, take them to the vet, get them neutered, get them vaccinated, and then keep them in their yard. And for people that have domestic cats, household cats, I'm all for that, don't have anything against it, but there should be an ordinance that they have to put a collar on their cat with a phone number tagged to the collar, so if their cat goes out in somebody's yard, at least you know it's a domestic house cat, and it isn't getting mixed up with people that trap cats right now. And there are several people that trap cats in this town, because they're sick of dealing with feral cats. And I personally would like to stay retired. I worked thirty years in the hotel and casino industry in Las Vegas, and I owned a home at Duck Creek Pines Housing Development in Duck Creek Village for fifteen years. So, when I moved here, we wanted to buy a new home here, but I'm not willing to pay a million dollars for a half a million dollar house. So, right now, we're currently renting. But I love the city of Parawan, I think it's the nicest city in all of Utah, that, all the places I've been. I got great thanks to Mayor Holderman for, when I called her, she returned my call promptly and got me on the docket for tonight. But I'm just asking for some common sense ordinances that puts a stop to the issues of feral cats in Parawan. And I have suggestions if you wanna hear them, but they're pretty extreme.
Maybe from here, our police chief could come up and talk about, it's an animal at large, just like a dog, and kind of what options are for people that are experiencing these kinds of issues.
We know there's issues with what, with, I don't know that they're all feral cats, but with the feral cat problem. The options that we have at our disposal, we don't, we do not have a shelter or a rescue set up that can take care of, of the amount of animals you would have in. We do have traps that will, we call it renting, but it's, deposits left, while you use the trap. Right. So, obviously, you're doing some of that, that would be one of my suggestions, to try to rehome them, or if they are an unrehomeable wild feral animal, dispose of them in a humane manner, find a rescue that's willing to take them, Best Friends Over the Mountain by Canab sometimes has some options and some programs that'll help. We just don't have all the answers for you.
Okay, my question is, as a retired citizen and taxpayer, why is it my duty or anybody else's duty to have to go out and trap feral cats, just so I don't have to go out and protect crap out of my yard, to protect my English Bulldog?
So, if you had, if you have a stray animal in your yard, and you want us to come and get it, we're happy to come and get it. We don't have any options available to us at the city for cats. We, dogs, um, farmyard kind of animals and things like that.
Catch one through my yard.
So, then how my, how do I catch it?
You don't, that's what I'm saying.
Right. So, there are different...
So, we have an out, you say, I'm gonna have one in my yard, no, not people are...
No, I understand what you're saying, but you're make, but like, you're, you're telling me exactly what I'm trying to tell you. It's like, they're not like a dog. I can come, we can, generally, we can try to take care of the dogs that are at large, and people are gonna come and claim them, or we're gonna find a home, or we're, and we can house them a few at a time. We just don't have anything, we don't have the tools for cats, uh, 'cause they're a different, well, and they're a different animal.
You guys try to not talk over each other.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sir.
We need to have, like, just a controlled meeting conversation here, and I think he's trying to answer your questions, and you're asking them faster than he's even able to answer them.
Right. So, the, we, we just, like you're saying to me, cats are a completely different animal than a dog is, it's, it's just, it's near impossible to go and catch them, and, oh, they're chipped, or they have a license, or they have a caller on them, we'll take them home. Those aren't the cats that are bothering you. If they're your neighbor's cats, it's, that's pretty easy to talk to the neighbors whose cats they are, and say, "Look, your cat is on my property, you can come to me at that point if I know whose cats they are and they're taking ownership, um, and you can show and be able to testify that this cat was on, was loose on your property, show pictures or something like that." We can issue a citation, just like we can for a dog at large, but...
Ninety-five percent of the cats in my yard are true wild dogs.
Sure.
So, I have a question, I'm just wondering if there's any appetite by the council to, um, enact a feeding ban. The state law allows us to have, uh, uh, community cats is what state law calls them, and they're defined as feral cats. They are exempt from feeding ban laws, meaning we can say you can't feed them. Um, I don't know if that, I don't think you can, you can authorize cruelty to animals, there's a different statute about that, but they are exempt from a feeding ban law. I don't think we have a feeding ban law, but do we wanna make one?
I would not be against that, I, we, I deal, I, I deal with this problem a lot when we find people that are feeding, and I'll go to them and talk to them, and they just, they say they're not my cats, but I don't wanna see them hungry, so I put food out. That's just a snowball getting bigger and bigger as it goes down the hill, it's just adding to the problem every time. I agree with you.
We both agree.
Right.
But you wouldn't wanna put a ban on doing that?
No, absolutely, I'm not against that at all, and...
Oh, okay. So, you'd support a feeding ban?
Yeah, I, I would, I would.
It was actually one of the suggestions that it broke down, if you make a city ordinance, make it bad and you can feed with feral cats, and then people get caught and hold a tally. And I talked to a couple of people, said, "Well, you know, you could give them a warning the first time, and a fine of twenty-five dollars the second time, and a fine of fifty dollars the third time." They aren't gonna put feeding feral cats with that type of a fine. I believe...
Could you come to the microphone? We have people watching on YouTube, they can't hear you if you're not at the microphone.
I believe that to fix an extreme problem, it takes extreme remedies. If you put a ban on feeding feral cats, I would make the first offense a five hundred dollar fine. Nobody had any problems that feeds feral cats when I went and paid veterinarian four hundred and eighty-five dollars last week to take care of my bulldog because of them. And I would make the second offense a thousand dollars, and I would make the third offense two thousand dollars, and then people would quit feeding the cats. That's one solution. Another one I thought about is putting, when people trap the cats, put a bounty on them, pay them ten dollars for catching it, they bring them to you, you hold them just for one hour a day, eight AM to nine AM every morning, anybody that catches cats can turn them in to you. And if somebody that loves cats and wants to feed feral cats, they're more than welcome to come adopt them that week, if they don't show up by Fri- Friday, they get euthanized, period. And I know, I know these are extreme measures, I know they sound maybe incompasient, but you're not gonna fix this issue if you don't take extreme measures. So, those are two of my suggestions. And, and to communicate this, you could send a one-time newsletter to all residents with mailing addresses in Parawan, you could put it on the Parawan website, and you could put a GoFundMe page up, and ask for, "Well, I would've much rather paid five hundred dollars to a GoFundMe page to take care of feral cats than I would've paid it to a veterinarian to take care of my sick dog. In fact, I will guarantee you, if you put a GoFundMe page up to eliminate feral cats, I'll be the first one to donate a thousand dollars that day." That's how serious I am. And it's not just my dog getting sick, this, some of these cats I caught were truly, truly wild. And there's gonna be people get sick too. I'm surprised there haven't been people got sick, and there probably has been, and they didn't know it was because of that. I mean, why should somebody living in a million dollar home not be allowed to sit on their own deck in their backyard because it stinks of cat urine? Does that make any sense to anyone? That's what we're dealing with, and that's what I'm asking for help with. And I appreciate all your help, I didn't mean to talk over you before.
So, so if we were to do something like, like he was suggesting, we'd have to have a place to keep them in that time, it would require investment into our shelter to have some sort of cat storage. And, and I don't, and I, and I know Chief doesn't wanna have some long-term cat storage, but what are you gonna do? Keep them, where do you keep them until that happens? So, just, I'm just trying to gi- give the council options and ideas, 'cause sometimes an idea can sound great, and then you have to think of how to implement it, so. A feeding ban, that's, that's an ordinance, that now becomes something that gets...
Can I look into that? The only thing I'm looking at as a prosecutor are the elements, and that is, one, the definition of feral, so if you charge somebody with a crime, which would be the only, you know, way to enforce that, you'd have to prove that the cat was feral, so it would probably need...
Well, I have a gated camera on my neighbor in apartment seven, so I can prove it all you want.
The definition...
For that person.
Then, you, maybe you could be our expert, I'd need an expert on what is a feral cat? Was that cat truly feral, what, ten is it? That's one, and then two, to your cat. Now, let me finish, and then I'll, I'll just be really quick. That, um, the person was feeding them, so Officer Blake would have, Blake would have to catch them in the act of feeding a feral cat for us to prevail in prosecuting that case.
My suggestion would be, like I said before, for any domestic or house cats, that it's gotta be an ordinance that they have a collar on if they get turned loose to go out of their yard. So, any cat that does not have a cat collar on with a tag would then be declared a feral cat.
We'd have to have a collar ordinance as well.
So, we, we have that for dogs, we have a license ordinance.
Cat collar.
Very often, good, good pet owners, their dog slips their collar, their license breaks off of it, things like that happen. So, that's, you're, you're gonna get a couple of things, you're gonna get people that are feeding feral cats, and their, their argument in court when, when Mr. Burns is prosecuting them is gonna be, "Well, I was feeding my cat, these other cats just showed up to eat it." Especially in that little place just north of you, 'cause it's a big community parking area, right? So, it's hard to say where does your lot end and the next end.
Speaking of a parking area, there's about four cars in there that don't have current license plates.
It's on private, private property. So, there's not anything I can do about that, 'cause it's on private property.
There isn't any ordinance against junk cars not being licensed and being in private?
On, on private property, there's some cold things in there if they're out on city streets or in front yards.
So, if I put a wrecked car in my driveway...
But let's talk about cats.
Yeah, we're talking about something else now. So, I think we've kind of vetted this now in terms of bringing it to the public with the concerns, and passing across some ideas with each other, which is kind of the point of a work meeting. And so, we'll have some council discussion about it, we can talk about what we'd like to do next, but just bringing this to the attention of the council is kind of the point of this being on the agenda tonight. So, you've done a good job of that, and Chief Adams, you've done a good job of giving some options, and I don't know that we have anything else we need to discuss on this.
Okay, I would, I'd just like to thank all of you very much for hearing me out. I apologize to Mr. Adams for over talking, but I'm very passionate about this subject, and sometimes I get a little carried away, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving now to our training on Open and Public Meetings Act. I thought we'd have a room full of people tonight, we do have our oneses, and at large, he's now leaving, just kidding. But this is an important part of what we do, and something we get questions about frequently is, you know, what are the rules for the open public meetings, um, and how this, you know, all comes together and helps us all do our jobs and do good with what we're charged with.
Okay, I was, you timing? I was told that one, Michael Edwards, attorney-at-law, did this one year in less than four minutes, so let me begin. Why do we do this? So, we don't violate the law. Fifty-two, four, one, oh, two is the legislature way of telling us that we have to enforce this. Who's subject to the law? Each and every one of you, all public entities and bodies. When in doubt, hold a public meeting, that's the number one rule. Who is not subject to the law? Political parties, groups, schools, others that are not subject to the law. What's convening a meeting? If three of you meet, that's obviously a quorum, but if you're meeting in church, or your house is going, or it's a party, that is not convening a meeting. But if you meet, there are three of them arguing, and you start to discuss business, that immediately qualifies as, uh, convening a meeting. What's a quorum? I think we all know that one, we beat that one to death a couple of years ago. Have you thought of a cat house, Chief, where you could keep them? Okay. Okay. Um, notice requirements are extremely important, and Callie is a master at that. And there's an example of notice. She understands that very well. And by the way, may I compliment you? You're very good at that. When there's any question about whether or not proper notice is given, it's better to cancel the meeting. Transparency is always better than not, because that's, that's important. Um, when can we go into closed meetings? We know that very well. When we're going to discuss somebody's competency, uh, their character, strategy sessions to discuss collective bargaining, we don't do that. But, uh, where litigation is a potential or imminent, closed meetings. Um, an open meeting can be closed for the following purposes. Again, security personnel devices. We had one of those when the officer came in. Investigative proceedings, allegations of criminal misconduct, strategy sessions to discuss the purchase, sale, exchange of real property. We do that a lot. And that is a wholly, uh, appropriate basis for having a closed meeting. Water rights is another good one. Guidelines for closing meetings, we all know about that. Closing meetings, uh, the process to close a meeting, a quorum must be present. Two-thirds of the member must vote to close the meeting. We've never had an issue with that. Forbidden in a closed meeting. Can't approve any city ordinance, resolution, rule, regulation. You can't expend any city money. You really can't take any final action on anything. Um, so, closed meetings are really for purposes of discussion. Uh, records, guidelines of an open meeting, even though record is approved, written minutes, um, will be the official record. And again, kudos. Um, and, yeah, we have, uh, policies and procedures for approving the minutes, um, date, time, place. You include all of that. Um, requirements for keeping minutes in closed meetings, we know about that. The members present, the names of the others. Closed meeting may be recorded, but shall complete and unedited. And they are not public records, as we know. We've had requests for those, and we have to say nope. And written minutes recordings of open meetings are available to the public upon final approval. Electronic transmissions. You can text back and forth, but what some city councils, county commissioners have been caught up in is, uh, they count votes. Well, if you'll vote this way, I'll vote that, and if you'll vote that. You can't decide by text how you're going to vote. Probably should be in an open forum. It is a violation of the law to violate. It's a class D misdemeanor. Who can enforce it? A county attorney, the attorney general, a court, and a private citizen can bring an action. And, oh shit! You're also not supposed to swear in open meetings. I'm on four minutes and twelve seconds, and that's all I have. Thank you.
You're at three minutes and fifty-eight seconds. I timed you. You're like right on the dot. I'm not kidding.
Scott, I have a question on page seven. Tell, tell Mike also what Scott punctuated this training with.
Sorry, Mayor.
You were right on the dot. No, you're great. And, and just for the public knowledge on open public meetings, if we err to, if there's even a thought, it goes to the public meeting, even at times where we're like, this is kind of-
I'm very good about that. And I, and I was, I was reading through this earlier and copied it and left it on my desk. So, thank you, Callie, for making the, the copy. Um, honestly, when I was the county attorney here when I first started, we violated the Open and Public Meetings Act every noon hour at the Parawan Cafe. That's where they would meet, decide how they're going to vote, and probably illegally charge lunch to the county as well. I don't know that it was prescribed back then, but I'd look back and-
Not ever while I was there.
Yeah, and, and, and everything was decided upfront, and, and it still goes on to some degree or another. This, this body, I'm telling you, you, you not only follow the, the spirit of the law, but the rules strictly. And you could be commended for that. It makes it more painful, honestly. It, it causes for some drama sometimes and for some angst and, but at the end, everyone thinks, you know, it works out. And, and it's a more honest form of government. And, and public hearings, if there's any question at all, you invite the public to come in. We've had public hearings and, and when you didn't have to, uh, on many occasions. And so, I think that's a very healthy way to conduct government. And whether you hear it or not from the public, I think it permeates, because they get it. They know. There's nobody trying to hide anything, or, you know, there's no fat deals. They're all in favor, say aye, in a quick vote. Um, it's, it's healthy, and it's, it's also very commendable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Three fifty-eight?
Yeah. Reports, updates, old business follow-up, and we'll start with Councilmember Burton.
Okay, the, uh, historic preservation, they, they, they met, but then they couldn't get back together, so they did kind of a vote electronically on, um, oh, a sign. The Sabar Latino Sign. And they approved it. Is that how you say that?
Saber.
Saber?
Mm-hmm.
Saber, okay. Um, the recharge committee met yesterday, and, uh, they're basically just working on getting the, the easements done and getting things out to bid, which, again, the dates that are advertised on May fourth, plans available May fifth. The mandatory pre-bid, the thirteenth, and bid's due by the twentieth of May. And so, hopefully, uh, they're wait- waiting on some funding. They're pretty sure that the, the final funding will come through for the reservoir companies. So, hopefully, that's going to move forward, and we can see that, you know, actual earth moving. Uh, the water board met before the last meeting, so we don't need to talk about that. Planning and zoning, they met, had the hearing on, public hearing on Rural Done Right. They had enough change to the Rural Done Right to have warned another public hearing in two weeks at city council, where it'll come here, and we'll have a public hearing and then address that again. Uh, the cemetery fence construction has begun. And, um, I'd just say, the, what was it, the mid-year conference? There was a, at first, I didn't think there would be much there that, you know, that would be new to me, but I found out there was, and I enjoyed the, all the, couple of the workshops on, um, all the introduction to conflict competence, and then the keynote speaker gave a great presentation that, uh, what was his name? I've got it here somewhere. Arthur Brooks. And those were, if anything, uh, nothing else. Those two, oh, the presentations and that keynote spe- he, speech was, was, made it well worth it. And, but there was a lot of other things that, and I was going through some notes, and I contacted Dan about one, and I, a few things. I attended some wildlife fire training and things that I hadn't done before. But then, uh, most, you know, last week, we had the great opportunity to go attend the Casey Christian film preview of Raise the Bar, which was, I think, a great opportunity and a, a great event for Parawan and putting Parawan kind of on the map.
And apparently, it's going to be out in theaters May-
Fourth, isn't it?
I thought I saw the fifth. Today, I saw a thing about the fifth.
Yeah. I, I heard something about this next week.
And there's, if you watch the credits at the end, you'll see special thanks to Parawan City. I think it specifically named Molly and Stacy Gale and Jeremy Franklin.
Mm-hmm.
That's because they got their, their, their camera drone stuck in a tree, and we, we had our boom truck go and help them take it out, so.
No, I think it was great, and it represented, you know, a historical event in Parawan. I mean, to give us an opportunity to be recognized.
You can go see it in theater right now, in theater.
It's up now, huh?
And, uh, we're coming up on the old rock church days. I'm going to pass these out. I told the Zaleskis I would, so if you can kind of pass these on, get the word out, get people involved. The great, one great thing is that there's, uh, Dixie Levitt Foundation, Dixie Nan Levitt Foundation have offered to get match up to fifty thousand if we were able to raise that, so.
Wow.
That would be a great, you know, great thing, so. Anyway, I'll pass these down, and you can get them out. Uh, I think, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing.
UAMs, nothing? Just kidding. Dave Harris is going to update it. Nope, you're, you don't want to say anything about UAMs?
On UAMs, no sir at home.
Okay.
It was, it was good, though. UAMs was good.
I just wanted to give you credit for going. It was the day of your life. Committed to that, and it was a good meeting. All right, John Dean?
Yes, um, went to, uh, Parawan Prevention Coalition today. It was great. Uh, um, one of the things that, um, hopefully, the city can do, uh, this summer. They said they had a, a pool day, and it, it was so, they had to turn people away, so I just, okay, well, you're going to say that. You got it. Um, they said they had to turn people away, so I just mentioned, I go, well, you know, we do have a big park right next to it. Not, not being a smart aleck, I just said, there's a big park. How about if we have activities in the park and the pool, so they, you know, people can rotate? And, um, and they're all up for that. So, we're going to be discussing that in a couple of weeks when they reach out. Um, let's see, like Dave, Councilman Burton, uh, we went to, uh, Utah Lakes of City in towns down in St. George. And it, great, too, that, once again, that, um, speaker was top-notch. He travels, he does a hundred and eighty, uh, talks a year to CEOs of, of companies and stuff. And met with Odo yesterday for three hours, a little bit more than three minutes.
That's why he's not being able to get stuff done. I'm just kidding. He's getting a ton of stuff done. But, yeah, hopefully, you chased him around while he was running.
Well, we talked fa- well, three hours' worth, but we got, we got projects for the next five years lined out, um, and had some great ideas and, and, yeah, so, um, it was good. And I have, you know, probably a meeting with Dan when I get back from vacation next week, and, uh, to discuss a few things that, that are more urgent than others that we'll have to probably present to, uh, the council one of these weekend. And that's it.
Dave Harris. Cheryl Topham.
All right, so, a little update on the fire department. This week, I, every day, I've gone to work at like seven fifteen in the morning, and our chief is down there. So, it's good to see. The doors open, the trucks out. It was, it's just been great. Um, they did go on four calls last week, and, um, he reported that eight volunteers showed up to every call. So, that's, that's great, because we haven't had that kind of turnout for quite a while. Um, yesterday, they did do some training with driving with some of those newer recruits, and they also did like pump training on the fire trucks and stuff like that, so they know how to run the pumps.
Is that what was going on here?
That's while we were here, they were doing training, but we were here in our special meeting.
No, they were in their meeting. Okay. Okay. I just saw a group of firemen, whatever. Oh, paraguna, okay.
And the theater board canceled their meeting again, so hopefully, we'll have it next week. That's all I have.
Dan?
Yep, um, I'm happy to say after two years, and we sincerely apologize to Sun Rock, but we finally got the check from the pay- the final payment on the runway. Four hundred something thousand dollar check. They've been waiting this whole time, because we had to do that additional grant. Remember, I brought that to you guys? So, we got that done, and we'll be cutting them a check within the next couple of days. So, that's a big deal. We're just grateful to have that done. We've still got to resolve the Prairie Dog, um, other thing for our engineer, but that's in process. Um, insurance renewal, we did get some information today, and they're on an extremely tight timeline, uh, as it usually is, in order to do open enrollment. But, we, we received information today that we, we can renew our insurance. Drum roll. We expected a high, um, insurance renewal this year. In fact, they told us it could be in the nine percent range. Nine to eleven percent's what they're commonly seeing. Ours came back at four point six, four point eight percent. Um, we do have the option of going with other providers, but they were all extremely high double digits if we were to move from P E H P. So, um, we, we have to say who we're going to go with, um, so that they can get all of everything in to trigger open enrollment before May fifteenth is the open enrollment target date. Now, from a budgetary standpoint, we still can discuss that. If you guys want to have a special meeting before we say, yep, we're going to stay with P E H P, we, we can certainly do that. Um, we will bring it as an official, um, agenda item to, to do that, to make it official. But, um, really, unless we're willing to consider going to other companies that are going to cost us even more than P E H P, we're, we're, um, that's pretty much our options, you know. And, and, and every time as we talk budgets, and this, this year, as we're talking budgets, we're talking, you know, the results of a salary study and all of that stuff. So, we can continue to have some discussion about, um, whether we're going to cover a hundred percent of that increase or not, or whatever. But, we do need to say we're going to stay with P E H P or not. So, I'm pretty much, we're going to tell them, yes, we'll stay with P E H P, bring it to you guys to ratify it. I didn't realize that we wouldn't have the time to officially bring it to you guys at the first, but we do need to tell them we're going to stay with them, so. If there's heartburn with that, we can have a special meeting and dig into the details. Um, otherwise, we'll, we will deal with the, how it's applied in, as we continue our budget discussions. Um, bridge update. I am very pleased to say that as they have dug in deep on analyzing the potential structures, they found out that it would be probably cheaper. And there's a lot of positive side effects of going with a poured-in-place box culvert style rather than a traditional bridge, a span bridge. There's one downside to the box culvert style and about five upsides. The downside is, is that they are planning on building two pour-in-place boxes, so you'll have that middle parapet where the box, the back of the two boxes face each other. Um, that is a potential debris problem. However, these boxes are really large. They span twenty-four feet wide, so they should take, and we don't have a lot of debris on our creek. I worry the day that comes that we have a monsoon that, that brings down a bunch of these dead trees from the fire. However, a twenty-four foot wide box should be able to take most of your trees through it. The advantage that you get from the box structure is, A, we can probably keep this thing at budget. B, when you build the box, they actually don't build the road right on top of the box. There's actually soil on top of the box and below, below the standard road structure. That means that you have insulation. They usually don't ice up like a standard bridge ices up. There were some concerns about building a bridge on an, on an angle, and this would be le- far less likely to ice up. The other huge advantage is, we, we will be able to put a sidewalk on both sides. We weren't going to be able to do that, um, but with the box, we can. That was one of the big things that the citizens came and asked for. So, we will actually, the, the design is not final, 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 but the last drawings that I saw, and I'll get a copy of them and send them to you, had the, the public, the, um, a- active transportation, um, twelve-foot path on the one side and a five-foot sidewalk on the other, which allows us to really solve our pedestrian crossing problems, and, um, that, that's a huge, huge win. The other advantage is, um, and this was one of the concerns about doing this standard bridge, they were going to have to drive piles. And driving piles in extremely rocky ground right by all of our utilities, there was a lot of risk factors by doing this box culvert. They don't have to overexcavate like they were going to have to with the bridge. It saves you ten feet of overx. It's just, there's so many positives to it that it's- They don't have to overexcavate like they were gonna have to with the bridge. It saves you ten feet of overex. It's just, there's so many positives to it that it's, that's the decision we're gonna go with. That's already been made by that committee, but they did take, um, the city's input, which was basically me, and I said, you've sold me at all of these positives, um, especially the budget, so. So, that's gonna happen that way. Um, as soon as we get some, some better design stuff, I'll forward that. We'll probably have another public meeting, just update the public. I'm excited to, to talk to the, the people that live around there cuz that's what they really wanted, and it didn't look possible. This way it is. Right-of-way issue is closed. There was potentially some concerns with, um, us buying that property with corridor preservation funds. I got a letter today that was an official determination from UDOT, including their, um, the AG's office that says, yep, you're good. This will just officially be designated as no right-of-way acquisition required by the project. So, we've threaded that needle very, very, very carefully and saved the city, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's a huge win, and I'm, I, I, I sweated bullets on that and, and it's a huge win. Um, water project, they've already talked about. Uh, Councilman Burton talked about, uh, bike park. Uh, we are planning on a grand opening. There's some flyers out the front office now. Um, we're gonna do a grand opening at the end of May, um, and the, the goal being that we, they want kids to ride that all summer long, and then at the end of the summer, we'll put the cap on, and that's on purpose. Um, we will be putting the fence around, um, as soon as we can and signage, but we are planning on doing a grand opening. Then, I think, when it's fully built, we'll do a ribbon cutting and have the media here and whatever, and whoever wants to come. But, so, we are gonna do a grand opening, um, and, um, just wanna do a shout-out to Public Works. And Anna has taken this as, taken this on and has gotten really excited about it. So, we wanna get the word out cuz not a lot of people know that it's there and it's gonna be open. Um, salary study, um, is almost done. Um, I, I'm, I need to spend another couple of weekend days on it, and I'm hoping to schedule a meeting with the salary committee sometime next week to go through and review that. And then, we need to very soon study our, our, our budget meetings. We, we needed to get the salary study done so that we could talk capital and talk personnel with the entire council. And I don't know whether we'll have a separate committee meeting or whether we'll just combine it all in the work meeting for budget. Um, it's probably gonna take a couple of hours to go through the salary study. Um, so, we, I guess we'll just reach out to the committee and decide whether we wanna do it all together or not. But we need to schedule these meetings soon. We are at the end of, um, April. Technically, we have to have a tentative budget filed by the first meeting in May, and by filed, meaning the budget officer, me, sends you a copy. It doesn't become a public document until we choose to with the, with the, required by law, ten days before the public hearing. But we are running out of time. We've, but we've been waiting to do the salary study. I've been burning the candle at, all through the middle and on all the ends to get it done. So much data-intensive work, but we're almost there, and so, it's gonna be good, I, I hope. That's all I have.
Well, I was gonna say, Public Works is also burning the candle at both ends. When we reviewed the projects that are in process, it's absolutely just overwhelming what all they are doing at once and how hard everybody's working, and definitely a shout-out to Public Works. Um, the only thing I have, and I could talk about so many things in so many meetings, but I'm reading the room, and I know everyone just wants a motion to adjourn. But I wanted to hold up this beautiful award that we got at, um, the Utah League of Cities and Towns. We had to accomplish a lot of things to get this, um, Healthy Utah Community Award. Not very many cities have it. I think less than, less than forty or less than fifty.
Just right around fifty.
And we have like a hundred and, almost seventy. Oh, two hundred and fifty-four cities in Utah.
Sorry.
So, we're a pretty elite little group that's done all of the requirements, and really, the messaging for me is like realizing how good we do and taking care of each other cuz that's a big part of it. And then also messaging to our community that we're a healthy Utah city because I think that all makes us feel like even being more healthy and also, uh, recognizing the efforts from the city to provide and do the things that we do and provide. I mean, we have a really awesome and budding rec program, and then we have sustainable food systems and food bank and free and reduced lunches and just things that are happening in the background. And one of the things I said in the interview, which I'm not gonna post it, but if you find it online, I, you know, we even fight cancer together. I don't know a community member that's had cancer that we didn't all come together and fight cancer with them, and we are a healthy Utah community. It's pretty awesome. But the shout-out goes to John Dean because he did all the paperwork, and it was a lot of paperwork. And this will be in our office. It's just, to me, it's just a really pretty award, and it's good for three years. You have to recertify every three years. But we're in a elite group of cities now who have the Healthy Utah Community Award.
Good job, John.
And with that, I will ask for a motion. Oh, wait, Callie, anything? Scott, anything else?
No, thank you.
A motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm not kidding. I apologize for profaning. That slipped out.
That made like the whole line.
You're gonna get called, Mayor. Oh, you chat site.
Sometimes we wonder if you can hear things that are spoken into the microphone. We all heard that. It was shouted.